Still, another side is the rest of the city residents and businesses who also need the city council's time to address their issues. Surely, we can come to a fair agreement for all. Parking issues are in place and accepted, and we encourage drivers to park only on one side of the street so traffic can flow, can easily flow. Restricted hours of play is also a normal and respected routine. The pickleball folks have evolved to change not to please the residents or ourselves, but because it is the correct and fair thing to do. It seems to us, some of us, that if the only issue is noise and there are options to solve the problems, then why not exercise those options? The money, which I understand to be around $12,000 and different numbers, to minimize the noise is relatively small and will put an end to this problem and free up the city councils from this issue. On behalf of friends and family that cannot attend this meeting, along with those here, I sincerely hope we find a way to keep these beautiful courts open. Thank you. And since I have a little more time, I think we should add two more courts to those eight courts. Thank you so much.
Yeah, my name's Frank Grazer, 66 Luther Drive in Punta Gorda. I was an old lifetime tennis player, and two years ago, my body gave out, and I came over to the dark side. I wasn't going to speak today, but one thing that I thought was not brought up, I heard from the residents, the noise, the barrier they didn't like because it obstructed the view, why not move it to the other tennis courts? There's already a line of trees, the view is already obstructed. If you put them there, you're further away from the houses, and I think it would leave you a lot of problems. Thank you.
Good morning, council. Here we are again. As we talk about pickleball in Gilchrist Park, like, I am not sure if you guys understand and see the impact of that park in the community.
Can you state your name, sir?
Oh, sorry. My name is Ricardo De La Ali from 25136 Estrada Circle in Punta Gorda. Before I moved to Punta Gorda, I was in Port Charlotte, and I used to ride my bike here to Punta Gorda. And when I found Gilchrist Park, I thought that was like the best-looking park in this area, so I ride my bike here every day. I worked in Punta Gorda for many years. I started playing pickleball, walking in the park, and listened to the noise. And one day, I looked, and I saw more people started coming and playing. This is not a country divided, this is not a town divided. We're not looking for anybody to sympathize with who. You city council are like a parent with two different kids. One is quiet and like reading, and the other one like running and making noise. You don't kick one out just because the other one is satisfied. You find a way to make them work together for the betterment of the house. And this is what this is. I mean, the noise, if it was by my house, it would probably bother me. But I have to say that if you stand across the street from where the park is, the noise is very little. By putting the sound barrier, the noise will be close to nothing. If the sound is the problem, then the noise will be reduced to nothing, so the sound is not a problem. Let's say the parking lot is a problem. The parking lot was a problem, but since we discussed it, we took many effort into making it better. We're not out here to gain, you know, advantages or disadvantages. We're here to make our part and let the community be the best for everybody, not just the homeowner, not just for the player, but for everybody. This is a community park. The community park is there so that people can come together and have a great time. We are here having a great time. People talk about the pickleball players as if we are villain. We are looking at the villains. This is us, this is the community, and there's no villain. It's a group of people that love each other, and we go out of our way to please. What else do you guys want us to do to support the community? We don't want the homeowner to move, we want them to stay. And so therefore, we're doing the barrier, and we're fixing the parking space. Since our last, since our last meeting here, I train probably nine different families that are walking from the playground to their car, and their kids are interested in learning. I teach kids from six to 17 years old every week. Please consider having the park here. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sherston Hobbs, and I own a house in Harbor Heights, 27098 Safe Haven Lane. I am a snowbird, but we are considering moving down here at the end of this year, permanently relocating our lives because we're still working. And we do, we drive into Gilchrist, not every day, but because we do play over in Harbor Heights because it has been so busy, but to do that, we have to, you know, call our friends, and because you can't, I could just go to Harbor Heights, and I could sit there all day, and maybe somebody would show up to play with me, but if you go by yourself, you go to Gilchrist, you know, there's people that play with. Pickleball is a social sport, you need multiple courts together, that brings, you know, lots of levels, so you can get a good game. And so when we play at Harbor Heights, we have to call, make a date, which is fine, but it's more fun if I come to Gilchrist occasionally because this is the only sport, the only activity in my life that I can do, or I can meet somebody, a complete stranger, and by the end of the game, we're friends, and I know where they live, I know what they did for a living, I mean, I know how many kids they have. It's a great sport, great way to meet people. I live in Wisconsin, I don't have that, you know, kind of support because we work, this is a time when we get to, you know, make friends. And I don't think it's fair to ask people that live in Punta Gorda that can bike and walk, which is a much greener way to get to the courts, to ask them to have to drive somewhere, which is what would happen with the Pickleplex because there's not really a safe way to get there from a lot of the people that live near Gilchrist Courts. We drive anyways, so it's not a hardship on us to drive to the Pickleplex when it opens, we will play over there, but it is nice to have something in the community where people can walk and don't have to drive and don't have to use gasoline. So I'm supportive of the noise abatement, if that's going to be what it takes, but I think you need to keep all eight courts because we need more courts, not less. Thanks.
Thank you.
The good news is, there's only two left. John Stockinger, Punta Gorda resident. A couple of issues I want to bring up is, there's always, there's always a lot of fake news that gets spread around. Okay, the housing on West Reta, I am a realtor. In the last 180 days, two homes had been sold, they were sold at 5% of market value. Okay? That's the average for Charlotte. There are also two pending preview, or right now. So that the houses are not saleable, that's just a false statement. The particular house that we're talking about sits at one foot above flood stage. Nobody would purchase this home. Your insurance cost would be $30,000 plus a year. Let's, let's get the facts straight with what we're trying to do. We offered to put up a barrier a long, long time ago, we seem to be readdressing the same issue over, over and over and over. Let's put up the sound barrier and be done with it. The villages has 160 courts, they have homes 50 feet behind it, they put up a sound barrier. The people, they know it's there. It does cut down the noise volume. Now, if you go across the street right now on Reta and you listen, yes, I do wear hearing aids, so I'm not the one that can make that, that test, but we never even did the sound evaluation. We should have done that a year ago. Let's stop kicking this ball down the road and, you know, keep addressing it, and addressing it, and addressing it. Let's get it done. We need, we need the sound barrier, let's put it up. You would ask for $7,000 to put up a historic signs on top of the street signs, we're asking for $12,000. If I lived in the historic district, I would have said, forget these historic signs, let's put up this barrier. I don't want to hear the noise, if that's what the case is. I don't think the sound is the problem. And when people talk about things that are going on in the park, my wife and I, we have cleaned up the park before, okay? We have condoms, we have human feces, we have needles, like you wouldn't believe. So anybody here that thinks there's not a problem in Punta Gorda, pickleball is the least of our problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And there's more than two people behind you, John.
They keep multiplying.
They're multiplying.
Yes, we all want to be last. My name's Andrea Dately, I live at 413 West Reta. I am here to ask the city to really consider what they plan to do today. This is an emotional argument. You asked for pickleball residents in the city, we found you your pickleball residents for them to express their opinion. We have our opinion from my, my neighbors as well. I'm asking you to really consider the sound abatement, first of all, not the one from television, but the one that's actually been suggested, the $12,000 option off of West Reta. I'm also asking you to really delay any serious, I mean, everybody's worried that you're going to close the courts completely. I'm asking you to really seriously consider not putting any kind of option like that on the table at all until after, and I'm going to say this, after the whole remodel of the park is complete. You're going to get a break here. Everybody's going to get a break from pickleball for, Howard, sorry to say this, probably at least a year while we do the remodel on the park. So I'm asking everybody to be rational, take a break, take a breather, and realize that we are all going to get a break from this argument for a little while, and not to do any rash decision or make any rash judgments until after that happens. Things change, you know, while that construction's going on, more people will probably go to the Pickleplex. I mean, we, we still want to play, we still have our addiction, so we still want to play. So please, put up the sound abatement, let's, allow us to play. Once we have to close the park for the remodel, then we can revisit it another time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jeff Wilson, I'm a full-time resident of Punta Gorda. I'm a beginner at pickleball, I don't play very often. I played at both the county park and Gilchrist. Of course, the first place I saw in Punta Gorda was Gilchrist for the courts. It's a beautiful setting, I really enjoy it. I am for not reducing the courts at all. I'm for any kind of noise abatement that would help the situation, and I want to keep the courts there. I don't play very often, but when I do play, that's where I want to go. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Margaret Strong, I live at 3900 Magnolia Way, my husband and I play pickleball. I just want to thank you for considering putting the sound barrier up. I would like you to consider not decreasing the amount of courts. I feel like my quality of life is wonderful, I feel like it affects a lot of people's quality of life, and to me, that's one of the major things in my life. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nick Zachrack, I'm a 70-year-old Canadian snowbird. Unfortunate for your tax purposes, I, my condo I own is in Port Charlotte. However, I play pickleball, as you can tell from my nice bright-colored shirt, at Gilchrist Park. If we had Gilchrist Park in Ottawa, Canada, which is the capital of Canada, we'd be the number-one tourist attraction in the world. Right now, in Ottawa, it's about six feet of snow and 20 degrees below zero, it takes four hours to sign up to get to play in a gymnasium. We don't have enough space, and even in the summer, we don't have enough space. I'm here to support my American friends who I've made over the last four years since I started to get pickleball. They're amazing. My social life was nothing, I had lost my wife 12 years ago. I got into pickleball, I used to come to Florida and play golf, now I play pickleball six days a week, five days a week, six days a week. The people, the American people are unbelievable. I spend approximately $25,000 to $30,000 American down here, in your local economy, fishermen's village, smokies, name a restaurant, I've been there. I belong to your Elks Club, I belong to your, the Moose Club. We go on the light festival thing on the boats. My pickleball has given me a new fiancee, who I plan to marry this summer, and according to my doctor, it's improved my health. I'm a 37-year military veteran in the combat arms, so the 37 years was pretty physically demanding, and I like physical exercise, pickleball gives me that. I get up at 7:00 in the morning to go play pickleball, even in the heat, I must be nuts. But I love the sport, I think your city council has a great decision to make, I hope you, you decide to keep Gilchrist Park, but it would be a shame to lose something so beautiful, one of the reasons I bought down here. And I feel sorry for the, the people that own homes, but I think your sound barrier, or move it over to where the tennis courts are and put one up, would be, would be a good idea. I wish my mayor had enough guts to have this kind of meeting in Ottawa, really. Thank you.
Thank you, and best wishes.
My name is Kathy Ant, and I'm a full-time Punta Gorda resident. I do feel that we owe the residents in that area the noise abatement, and I think we owe the rest of the residents keeping all eight courts. This has been very emotional, I've been to all the meetings, and have a sound study done. Let's get some facts on the table to understand how bad it is before any other decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name's Kathy Katz, District 1.
It's still morning.
Hi, everybody. I wasn't going to speak today, I have two letters I'm just going to submit to you from residents that you can read at your leisure. One thing that just struck me as I sat here this morning is density. All of a sudden, we know, we know, we look at this, I mean, I have lots of Dragon Ball friends from the villages, 160 courts up there, and we know, you all know, that pickleball is extremely popular, people love it, they really, really love it. It's fun for me to see people who are sitting here, and they are so passionate about this, but what has happened is, a nice, beautiful passive park has become a sports park for us in Punta Gorda. Obviously, because of the density and so many people, that's, that's the real impact. So I ask you all, city council people, to please think about this, we'd like to keep this park passionate, or we'd like to keep this park as a, as a passive, beautiful, quiet park, and I have to add this because my ego just won't let it go, but, you know, I know everybody here is really active, come to CrossFit with me three days a week.
Thank you. Thank you.
Rick Sarkisian, 910 Connecta, citizen of Punta Gorda. Let me first comment that if you look at the city master plan, Gilchrist Park in the city master plan is listed as an active park, not a passive park. I'm not going to repeat all the things that were said about pickleball. Quickly, though, I will say that acoustic fence is a proven solution. We've asked and asked and asked to eliminate the pedal noise from going across the street, acoustic fence will do that. We can landscape the acoustic fence, the pickleball courts will disappear from Reta, just like the tennis courts cannot be seen from Reta. The pickleball courts are, at the minimum, a $200,000 asset to the city. That's at the minimum what it would cost to rebuild those courts. So $13,000 to make the courts palatable to all is a wonderful expenditure. And finally, this one just came up just the other day, it was like an aha kind of moment, the pickleball community would be glad to move the players in waiting on the harbor side such that they could not be seen from Reta, so that's an additional solution that we could add. So I support the sound barrier, I think it's a good solution for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lynn Stockinger, 1336 Seahorse Court, resident and citizen of Punta Gorda, and I too am in favor of a sound abatement, making things palatable for the neighbors. It is an active park, as Rick said, he emulated most of my statements, and the citizens that play pickleball did initially contribute to the funding of those courts, so I don't see how we can eliminate courts that the citizens funded and the city accepted the money from the citizens. So I, I'm not sure how all of that would come into play down the road, but I do believe we need to be friendly neighbors, nice neighbors, we can move the staging area. I don't play real often, but I'm sure that I know all these wonderful people, they would all be in favor of doing whatever would help to make this more palatable for the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Wolf, I live in Port Charlotte, I come over to Punta Gorda a great deal to walk through the parks, occasionally play pickleball, though for the last year I've been pretty much unable to because of shoulder surgery. I love the sport, I wish I could do it every day, I can't. One of the things that I noticed going around Charlotte County and Punta Gorda is almost every park has one or two tennis courts that are idle. You almost never see anybody on it. The one over by the pickleball court here that we're talking about, occasionally you see a couple or maybe four people playing, but it's a rare thing to see. At the same time, you have that pickleball court packed, you have a, a little tenant or basketball court that is almost never used. If it was used heavily, the neighbors would be complaining about that ball being bounced around too. I want to put something out for the committee that is could be looking at this, and I wish I had saved it, but about two years ago, give or take, there's an article in the paper, a small one, that talked about the Midwest and a lawsuit that was brought because they were trying to stop the pickleball players. And it went to court, it was a local court, so it did not set precedent, but the decision was that a park is for recreation, period. And pickleball was part of it. The only other thing I'd like to say is that you do get an awful lot of money being brought into this community directly and indirectly through pickleball, and I support the Pickleplex. As a matter of fact, a year ago, even though I can't play a lot, I contributed some funds to that project because I think it's that important to have that extra courts here, and the tournaments that they're hoping to get to bring in a lot of people to spend money. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your contribution to Pickleplex.
Good morning, my name's Betsy Blassey, I live at 821 Kings Court in the Punta Gorda Historic District. I'm asking city council to postpone any decision until the pickleball committee is organized. There's still more work to be done and more research that needs to be completed. As a committee member, I believe that the barrier on Southwest Corner only will help a few homeowners, it would not help the rest of the homeowners on the other, or the other park users. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name's Susan Barnhart, I live at 1030 Via Fermia, I'm a resident of Punta Gorda. Pretty much everything I wanted to say has already been said, so I'm not going to repeat myself, but I would very much like for you to keep these pickleball courts, allow people to come, enjoy the park. Parks are meant to be enjoyed, they're not meant to be idle, they're not meant to be quiet, you're meant to have fun there, and if the sound barrier is something that will help make everyone happy, I'm certainly in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name's Al Green, and I am not a singer. I do live at 150 Harbor Side, so I am a city resident here. I do ride my bike to the park, and I do park on the grass. This park, Gilchrist Park, is a million-dollar view, it is not only a gem, it's a jewel here in this town. People come to Punta Gorda to play at Gilchrist Park pickleball all the time. You get top-notch play there. You don't go to a place where you have a couple, four courts or two courts, and you get average play over at Gilchrist, you get top-notch play there. When you go to a tournament and people are winning medals, people say, "We're from Gilchrist." I played at a tournament last weekend, man, and then the Gilchrist people pulled away with some medals last weekend. They're great people to hang around with, and believe it or not, this is probably the first time out of being a coach in sports for all these years, I've met people that are not in the bar. Most of my friends are barflies. Pickleball is not like that. They're great people to hang around with, and you can learn a lot from those type of people. This past summer, I had the privilege to drive from here to Alaska for five months and over 18,000 miles on my vehicle. Along the way, I played pickleball in the Panhandle, I played pickleball in Texas, I played in the Cactuses in Arizona, I played at the bottom of the mountains in Utah, looking at the Snowcap Mountains, playing pickleball. I played pickleball in California, I played in the mountains in Washington State, I played in the beautiful state of Alaska. I come back down through Canada, I played on my way back down, coming back through Wisconsin and Michigan, I played pickleball. So I've seen a lot of venues, played at a lot of venues, and not one venue, even looking at the mountains in the background, which we do not have here, what a view Punta Gorda has here at Gilchrist Park. Hands down, the number-one venue I've ever played at, at 18,000, after 18,000 miles in five months last year. Hands down, beautiful over there. So why take that away from the community? I don't know. I do support eight courts, I do support, support the sound abatement, and I appreciate your time this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is still morning, I'm Bradford Gamblin, Punta Gorda resident. I'm not a pickleball player, however, I have many friends who are. I've got a bad knee and a bad ankle, and I hope to get those repaired so someday soon I can be playing pickleball as well. However, my, what I would like to mention or put forward is, the city of Punta Gorda does not have a Parks and Recreation Department. The city is growing. We are expanding community-wide and area-wide over a period of time, and there are a lot of things putting pressures on us. I think we ought to look to the future because we do not, did not anticipate this with pickleball, and we're probably not the only ones that didn't, but we have to get ahead of this. We're not ahead of what has happened with pickleball and Gilchrist. That's why we do need to start looking at a Parks and Recreation Department because there's going to be pickleball, there will be other things, and maybe this is something where we could get the community involved in, in helping determine what the Parks and Recreation future of our Punta Gorda city should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm John Welch, I'm a resident of Punta Gorda, I am not here to talk about pickleball.
No?
You notice there's no line behind me either. I'm also the president of the Punta Gorda Boders Alliance, and we are the organization that has put forward a request to dredge Ponce inlet to seven feet. And the reason is, is because when this community was founded and those canals were dredged, the average depth of a sailboat was probably something like four, four and a half feet. Today, most sailboats have gotten bigger, and the depth has gotten deeper. And I just sold my sailboat that drew almost six feet because I couldn't get out probably 90% of the time out of Ponce inlet, and when I went out, I would run aground at least three times, and then have to back up and pick my way through the inlet. The inlet is supposedly dredged to six feet. That is not true because of the way the government requires the dredging is done, it's actually dredged to five and a half feet. So when you hear six feet, not true. We're requesting seven feet because A, boats have gotten bigger, B, it will increase the value of our property and make the canals more usable. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I thought there was no one.
You thought there was nobody behind you.
I tried.
I'm Beth Magnon, I'm a resident of Punta Gorda, I've lived here since 2003. There were two ideas that were brought forth this morning that I thought had a lot of merit. I think that you should let the committee that's going to be formed, the pickleball committee, let them do their work, and second of all, the idea was brought forth that let all the work be done on the park, and then let's see what's needed. Is there any guarantee that the, the barrier, the sound barrier that's going to be built around the pickleball? What if it doesn't work? Then what? So I thank you for your consideration today, I thank you for listening to all the comments from our citizens, and I know you'll be fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, are there any other citizen comments? I hereby request a break. So, seeing that there are no more citizens' comments, there's been a request for a break. I think that we should, how many minutes can we afford?
It depends on how many constituents get ahead of, ahead of us.
So, let's take a 10-minute break then. Okay. We have a lot to discuss today, so we're going to get the session back, and so if you all can silence your conversations and we can get going on, on our agenda here. So the first item on the So the first item on the agenda, under budget, is a citywide master plan, additional services, transportation activity.
Good morning. For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design Division. So, our consultant for the citywide master plan, Dover Coal Partners, was here at the end of January, and they interviewed city staff, city council, a number of community stakeholders. And...
I can't hear. I can barely hear you.
Can you talk louder?
Yes, I can.
All right, thank you.
Again, for the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. Our planning consultants for the citywide master plan, Dover Coal Partners, were here at the end of January. They interviewed city council, members of city staff, and numerous community stakeholders. And based on that site visit, they submitted to us a recommendation to provide a transportation-related activity in addition to their current contract. According to them, this is, I'm going to read for a minute here, so please forgive me. While we heard a lot of consensus regarding the desire for safer and more walkable city, we heard conflicting reactions to the conversions of Marion and Olympia avenues to two-way traffic, the desire to remove public streets from the downtown that currently complete the street network due to unsafe intersections, and we heard some who feel that bikes, as opposed to the streets where bicyclists ride, are inherently unsafe. We heard from many that new development will result in parking and traffic issues, and many of these comments stem from a lack of understanding about what makes streets safe and comfortable for users. There have been important shifts in the transportation engineering and street design practices over the last two to five years, as well as new technology in parking management and micromobility, which we feel should be shared more widely in the community. So what they have proposed is a, basically, an educational webinar and videos of best practices in transportation planning, and this would be a benefit to our community in terms of helping frame the conversation in preparation for the charrettes, and would be lasting documents that would live on after the charrettes to help inform decision-making as we go forward in implementing that citywide master plan. So, with that said, city staff does recommend the approval and requests appropriations of funds for the exercise of option one, as offered by Dover Coal Partners. This option would provide a tailored product that is Punta Gorda-specific, addresses questions and concerns directly from the community members, and an initial live webinar portion of the proposal.
Open this up to questions for Mitchell and Debbie.
Mitchell, how will these be presented to the public? Will they be held in public forums so that, like, you'll get people in a room to watch this? Or are we going to rely on people looking at this at home on their computer?
So on the option-one proposal, there would be an actual live webinar session that would be conducted, so there would be a site-specific location where this could be viewed. And then that viewing, the sort of Q and A portion of that, in addition to the informational presentations that would be provided, would be available as videos, which could be posted to the city's YouTube channel and posted to other venues for public consumption.
Lynn?
I'm going to be the bad guy here. I have a huge concern that before we even get started on this master plan, we're already adding addendums onto the contract, and we're going to start digging into the special reserve account to fund something that I personally feel should be included in the master plan. I do not support this at all. I just think that this is a horrible precedent, that we're getting off on the wrong foot, and I'm getting the vibe that our consultants have already decided how they're going to go about doing this master plan, and it's going to be their way and not the way of the citizens. And I don't like, I don't like what I'm feeling about this. This is very concerning to me. I think we should not be spending any more money out of that account at this moment in time. I think it should be folded into the master plan, and we already have a contract in place that should include things like this, so I don't support it.
Chaha, do you have a question?
Yes. I feel, being that we're worried under budget for what we anticipated, we anticipate half million to 750, and I think within even under the half-million-dollar mark that we're way under, I feel that for this process to actually be useful to our population, we should do as much civic education as possible. I think that, I mean, we can have people come to the room and share their thoughts, but we want our citizens to be as empowered as possible with information. And I think that if this is a deficiency which has been noticed, I think it's very important for us to get our citizens as powerful as possible so they can share as much as possible. I just think, I mean, best practices in urban design and in transportation, that's what our decisions ultimately, as a city, is going to be made on, is best practices, not just what we want. We actually have to do so in a manner that's actually going to be viable, both financially as well as from meeting, you know, what we need to do as a city. So I'm very much in support of this.
Gary?
Having participated in the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Commission and also the State Regional Planning Commission, transportation issues has been a topic that is perplexing to a number of other communities. Should we go, if the point is, is do I believe we should go forward with additional efforts to define what the traffic and transportation situations are unique to Punta Gorda, I am full-heartedly in support of that. And I don't think that we should pinch a penny from that particular perspective. There has been a tendency in the past for communities, when they have a traffic, this is the gist of what I've heard, is when they've had a traffic issue or a congestion issue to add another lane. Or, as we've experienced within our community, when we were going to add other lanes, they weren't followed through, and we wound up with Keystah the way it is today. Although we do have it on a project list, it's not very high on that priority list, but we at least have identified that in the last year and got it reestablished, so it just didn't fall in the other lands. We're going through a master plan process. This master plan process should be a living process, from my perspective, which means that we will be visiting it on a regular basis in the future, along with transportation issues. If we are under what our initial budget is, which it certainly is the case, perhaps this is a nickel that we missed in our specifications, we should consider adding. But I do believe that we should go forward with the option-one study, however we choose to find funding for it, either through the present contract or an additional contract. That's, we'll discuss that as we go on. But I just want to state that I am, feel that we do need to have a non-cookie-cutter study for Punta Gorda. That's the whole purpose of the master plan to begin with, and we need to continue on with that and as we learn other details as we go forward. If we knew all the details upfront, we wouldn't be needing a master plan to begin with. Our illustrious urban planning people could do the whole job in an hour and a half. We're going down this route because we know that as talented as they are, we can't do that, and we're asking for consultants because this is what their expertise is. It's not what our individual expertises are, sitting up here on the dais. This community's gone through this when they decided to put in a reverse osmosis plant and other major projects where we have to make sometimes decisions that we're not experts in, and so we go to the experts to help us make concerted and proper decisions that way, so.
If we can keep our comments brief so that we can keep this conversation...
Did I get my three minutes yet? I'm sorry. I apologize.
Mitchell, how does this fit in with the traffic study that the gentleman presented to us two months ago?
So, and just for the public certification, in 2018, the city went out for a consulting firm to do a transportation study. And this transportation study was related to the build-out pattern of Punta Gorda within its current limits and extended into potential annexation areas, and what the potential traffic issues we may see over the planning horizon, which is to 2045. And that study was primarily focused on automobile traffic because that's where we see, that was the direction of council in terms of crafting the scope for that study. In this, so from Dover Coal's perspective, they're looking at, how do we make the downtown a viable place? How do we make our communities connect better to those commercial areas, our residential areas connect better to those commercial areas? And they're looking at transportation from a holistic perspective, both from automotive, from non-automotive modes, from mobility options to parking, to how that fits in with development and redevelopment. So their approach is going to be completely different, as highly technical and skilled, but a different set of metrics that they're looking at in terms of that transportation.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, this, as I looked at this, I felt that shouldn't this be something that would be an outcome of the master planning process where they determined that our residents needed more? And so, and I would anticipate there will be a number of outcomes that might come out of that, that would be a series of things that may be recommendations. I also looked at this as far as a calendar, and the charrettes start three weeks from Monday.
Yes, they do.
In order for us to let people see these videos, we basically have to have this ready a week from Friday because we have to, we have to be able to give people more than a week to look at this. So, you know, backing up in time, you know, we have, we all send out newsletters or communicate, and on Facebook and on Twitter and all that, so we have a huge way to communicate. But if we wait, and that happens the first week in March, we've really lost a huge opportunity because we're not going to communicate with residents until the weekend before the charrettes, and that's really basically too late.
Yes.
So I'm just wondering if it's even feasible to do something in that short of order.
And that was a staff concern as well, and we have spoken with Dover Coal about the potential scheduling of this, assuming that city council did want to proceed with this item. And we are looking at, the consultants said that they would be available and prepared and ready to do this by the 25th or 26th of this month. So that would potentially, because that packaged presentation would be, that would be able, we would be able to post that to the internet, hopefully, shortly thereafter that actual session.
Can you explain to me, a comment, you said that this is something that we, they would have normally included as a part of an overall pre-charrette process, but that they cut this out because they thought we were further along in our knowledge base than...
So, in terms of the scoping for the project, the process that we went through with city council to modify the scope of this project, there were public education components and transportation-related components that we sort of, in our minds, as a community, we sort of checked those off and said, well, maybe we don't need to focus on those so much because we were so far along. We're updating an existing, very comprehensive master plan for our city. We're not creating the first one from scratch, and we had just done the transportation study in 2018. So we had things in process that we thought would feed into this maybe a little bit more or in a different way than the way that the consultants that we hired see them fitting in. So, from the consultant's perspective, and again, I'll read just a little bit here, please forgive me, that the video and webinar are meant to complement the work started by the Journey to the Future event, but with a specific focus on transportation. When Team Punta Gorda put on that Journey to the Future event, they were really looking at, how do we educate the community about best practices in planning and get them prepared and empowered to be active participants in the charrette? So a lot of the legwork that a municipality like ours would have paid Dover Coal for has already been done by that process. So we're the beneficiaries of having a very proactive and engaged community, but they see a little gap here, and they want to get it filled so that we do the best work we can possibly do.
Okay.
One thing, I mean, we have to acknowledge, which they probably would not have known, is that our community is unique in the sense that a large percentage of our community renews every eight years. And so in other communities, you can assume there's going to be a continuity of knowledge where we have new residents that come all the time, so they wouldn't have been a part of that master plan process initially, so they're going to need to be brought up to date so we all can be able to contribute. So that's why it's important.
So where do we want to go with this?
Well, I'd like to make a motion for approval for the first one. Let me look at, give me a second. Which one did you say, Gary?
Well, we have two options. Option one, option two, which is 3930, is just the, let me get it here. Excuse me. It's the best practices video. Option one is a best practices video along with the webinar.
That was the one. That was the one.
The one that's 5935?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second for the citywide master plan, additional services, transportation activity. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for option two.
Second.
There's been a motion for second, for the option two, which is...
$3,930.
For the...
Video.
The video. All in favor by signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Debbie, did you know? Those opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks. Okay. We'll move on to the pickleball court's sound abatement.
So, after the discussion today, we have, we were asked to bring back some options regarding a coustafence or a similar type of barrier, because when we bid it out, we can bid out a coustafence, or if there's another material just like a coustafence, they can bid too. We have three options that we've come up with. $12,000 is the estimate for the existing 10-foot fence that kind of faces Reta almost. That's $12,000. Then, another option is $32,000, which is the 10-foot fence facing Reta, and add another 10-foot fence on one side to offset the noise, but leaving enough space so that spectators can still see the courts. And then the third option, which we are not recommending, is the $64,000 option, which is to put sound barriers around all the courts, but then that would block the view by the harbor walk, which we didn't, as I remember the last conversation we had as council members. Council members did not really want that, nor did we as staff. So those are the three options, or do nothing and wait for the Pickleball Committee and the park renovation to take place.